Yeah.
Good evening. It is November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. This is the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees meeting. It is about seven oh three. I go and call this meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Trustee Sam Berry.
Here.
Trustee Patrick D'Ambrosio.
Here.
Trustee Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Al Moser, here. Trustee Mary Petliczkoff.
Here.
Trustee Irene Watts.
Here.
Chair James Thorpe.
Here. Next item?
Approval of minutes, approval of the following minutes of the Board of Trustees Financial Stability Ad hoc Committee Meeting, October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, Audit Committee Meeting, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Regular Meeting, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So moved.
Support?
Okay, I got distracted for a half second. I'm going to give that one to Pat and then to Roxanne as support. Any additional corrections? I know Mr. Dimitri sent out an updated one because of one typo. Was there anything else that needed to be corrected? All right, hearing none, can I attach a unanimous roll?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, please attach unanimous roll. Next item?
Recognition and acknowledgements.
Thank you, President Cavalluna, Chair Thorpe, and members of the board. My name is Alena Kandracik. I'm a two thousand and twenty-one graduate of Flora Community High School. I graduated summa cum laude, number four in my competitive class. I chose Henry Ford College over my acceptance at several in-state universities because Henry Ford College is affordable, relatively close to home, and in my opinion is a great transition from high school to college. I was also admitted into the honors program, and joining the program has been one of my best decisions. Dr. Adam Hazlett has fostered a supportive and inspiring community, and I couldn't be more thankful to be a part of the program. I have had great experiences with faculty and students, and I know that this opportunity will prepare me for my future. I plan to transfer to a neighboring university to continue studying supply chain management. I am currently enrolled in seventeen credit hours as well as working a part-time job. I am also a student representative on the Mirror News Advisory Board. Now, I am pleased to read this month's HFC Board acknowledgements. The men's basketball team is off to a great start this year. The team is currently ranked eighth in the first poll for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two season. The team moved up from the preseason poll ranking of tenth after impressive victories over Owens Community College and Edison State Community College. Congratulations, HFC freshman guard Curtis Jackson for being named MCCAA Eastern Conference Men's Basketball Player of the Week for the week ending November sixth. Jackson had twenty-six points, thirteen rebounds, sixteen assists, and ten steals in two games. Congratulations to Katrina Minnis, enrollment services team member. Katrina has been nominated to serve in the National Society of Leadership and Success at Eastern Michigan University. HFC commemorated Veterans Day on November eleventh by highlighting supports, by highlighting support for military veterans and current service members as they transition out of military service back to civilian life. Jessica James, U.S. Navy veteran, and Michael Palmer, U.S. Army veteran, currently attend HFC and share their stories on their transition from military to civilian life and how the support they receive from their family, friends, and their community have helped them succeed. Also highlighted were Bob James, HFC faculty member in the BIP division, and Nina Denny, HFC Culinary Arts student and president of the HFC Student Veterans Association. Both are mentors in the Dearborn Veterans Treatment Court and work under the guidance of Judge Jean Hunt, Nineteenth Fisher Court, who established the Veterans Treatment Courts in two thousand and eighteen. We also want to acknowledge and thank HFC's Gail Bach, manager of veteran services. Gail works with the Veterans Administration to maintain compliance with VEA and state regulations. She is also HFC's school-certifying official, which entails assisting veterans, current military service members, and their dependents in applying for and using their educational benefits at HFC. Additionally, Gail serves as the first point of contact for students who plan to use their military benefits at HFC. Congratulations, Nicholas Pacero, HFC Sustainability Coordinator, for his role in managing the honeybeehives and our partnership with U of M Dearborn called Bee Connected. The partnership began in spring of two thousand and twenty-one with the introduction of four new colonies of honeybees to the space of the U and on the U of M Dearborn campus. Their first year will be spent getting the new hives established and monitoring their health. We hope that starting next summer, students from both campuses can visit the apiary for hands-on learning experiences relating to hive management, bee research, and more. Thank you for the opportunity to be this month's reader. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Well, Ms. Kandresiak, I appreciate you giving me the chance to ask questions, and I enjoyed getting a chance to meet you for the first time just before this meeting. And trustees, I'll say that the word is out. She said, "I just don't want the questions to be too hard."
Oh, well, then we are going to be working in what we're going to say.
Well, let me start with a comment. I don't think it's fair, but you had one of the hardest, longest lists of things to read. And ordinarily, I would think that'd be a disadvantage, but it's no surprise that you were summa cum laude and that you're involved in so many things: a part-time job, seventeen credit hours, as a student rep on Mirror News, because you went through this like a trained professional speaker.
Thank you.
And I sometimes wonder, as I was listening to you talk, whether communications and leadership may be a better path for you. But you said you're interested in supply chain management, and I wonder, this is a pretty unique, a pretty interesting time to go into supply chain management.
Yes.
Tell me what made you think about that as your career choice, and if you saw yourself as a wonderful success ten years from now, what would you be doing?
Honestly, it's funny you ask that, because before I came to HFC, I was so set on engineering and the STEM route, because I love math. But I wanted to incorporate, you know, some of my communication, so I wanted to be a business major. And since the pandemic, I've learned what the supply chain actually is, and I was kind of interested in supply chain management, because I feel like I could incorporate the business, talking to people. And it's just a diverse field, and it just seemed very interesting to me. So I am exploring it here at the perfect place, HFC. So I'm loving it so far. I love my professor Diana Barron. I've learned so much about it, and I think I want to continue down the supply chain management route. I don't know what my future will look like in ten years from now, but hopefully it's somewhere still in that field.
Yeah, well, I hope you find success and enjoyment wherever you are headed, and I'm quite confident you'll find both.
Thank you.
I was going to ask you if you could name anyone that's made a difference for me, so you've already done that.
Well, there's more. Like, all of my professors here are just so amazing. I want to recognize, actually, all of them, because I couldn't be more thankful for them. Betsy Cohn, John Reitz, Diana Barron, Joanna Wade, and the new Lynn Burke. I love them all. They're just great professors.
Yeah, well, thank you for saying that. I know several of them. You may not know this, many don't, but Betsy and I have kind of a back-and-forth on email about words of the day, you know, she's-
Yes, the Marion Webster, yes.
Yes. So you're in that kind of pen-pal relationship with her in that also, I see. And then, of course, I enjoyed seeing your class with John Reitz. Was that maybe a month ago?
Yes, it was around my birthday in October, so the first week or so in October. I wrote a journal about it recently, so I think it was around the tenth.
So the board knows John Reitz is teaching a class on, well, why don't you explain what was-
Yeah, so I am in a honors colloquium class, and this class is focused around climate change with John Reitz. So we're learning all about climate change, and we have multiple presenters, including the president. And Nicholas Pacero, who I said in the acknowledgements, joined our class and talked about the Integrated Energy Master Plan.
Wow, impressive.
Yes. I'm telling, I just wrote the journal about it, so it's a little fresh in my mind. So we learned about, you know, the big investment that HFC has made, and then more about what our campus will look like in the future.
And the big return we hope we'll see.
Yes, exactly. So it was really, it was a really good presentation. Thank you.
Well, you've endured more questions than I usually give, and you did a fantastic job. So Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions, but I certainly won't stop anyone else from asking any questions. Just know, I can't control them.
Trustee Petliczkoff.
Yes. Something that we're really focused on right now, and you'd be one of the best students to answer it, since you started your story about attending here. How did you hear about us, and what motivated you to continue? Because I know, especially with somebody, it sounds like with your interests and background, that you might have looked for a four-year college-
Yes.
-to begin your career.
So actually, I come from a family of Hawks. Both of my parents work here, so when I was looking for community colleges, I definitely was looking here. But I knew some of the people here already, and I knew I loved the campus, and I couldn't be more happy with my decision to be here. Everyone here is just amazing, you know, my professors, my classes, everything about HFC is amazing. So that's kind of what led me here. And then I knew, I knew from the beginning that I wanted to start off somewhere small before I headed to, like, an institution, and now a bigger institution. And now I'm looking at articulation agreements, the two-plus-two, three-plus-one. I'm exploring some of those so that I can transfer to possibly Wayne State, Eastern, MSU, who knows yet, so.
That's wonderful. I will tell you that with your variety of interests that you've expressed so far, you might be ended up into a political career at some point in time, I hate to tell you, but it sounds like you're melding a lot of things that we're finding to be a crisis right now that is going to need a lot of young people like you who will invest in that future endeavor. So-
Thank you.
I'm very pleased that you're kind of going off the traditional path.
Thank you so much.
Trustee Moser.
Alena, can I address you by your first name?
Yeah.
Because if I say your last name, I butcher it.
That's okay.
Seventeen credits, part-time job, and being on the Mirror News. How do you do it?
That's a great question. In high school, I have always taken harder classes, you know, each year I've taken progressively harder and harder classes. So I'm kind of used to putting a lot of stress on myself for the semester, so I don't know, to answer your question. Yeah.
No, kudos to you.
Thank you.
I was kind of doing the same thing some semesters.
Right.
Sometimes pressure puts you to work, so that's-
It wouldn't be possible without my professors and the support of my family also, so I'm really grateful for them.
Your parents should be very proud.
Thank you.
Trustee Watts.
So I think many of my fellow trustees and President Calhoun already spoke on things that I wanted to touch base, but I definitely think that by you, your presentation today, and just the way that you carry yourself and your ambition, I don't want to dissuade you from supply chain, but I think that there is going to be a future beyond supply chain for you. I guess we have many students come in front of us, and all of them are extraordinary. But the way in which that you're able to create a compelling argument and create a, you're ambassador for this college. So I just want you to think about that, because your public speaking is on point. And the other thing is, have you ever just stopped doing anything?
Yes. I'm actually secretly a procrastinator, and so I stop all the time, but then I keep going, and I don't, then I say, "Don't stop," but I persevere, and I get things done. But sometimes I do stop, and yeah. But thank you for your kind words. It really, you know, means a lot to me, because I was nervous coming up here, but now, after reading everything and now talking to you guys, I feel way more comfortable. So thank you.
Well, it never showed that you were nervous at all.
I'm glad. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
What I would add, I'm glad you're on our campus.
Thank you.
And without naming any classes, I'm guessing, well, we know you're taking several to have seventeen credit hours.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming you're on campus for some, a hybrid for some.
Yes.
How is it working out with the form of instruction for you?
It's great, because I have a combination of all the classes. I have in-person, online, and so live without the drive, and then asynchronous classes. So my two in-person classes are on Tuesdays and Thursdays with Betsy Cohn and John Reitz, and I love coming to campus on those days. And then my online classes, I have my Intro to Business and my accounting class. I love seeing my professors through the screen, and then I have my supply chain class, which is asynchronous, but I still keep in touch with Diana Barron, even though I don't really see her through the screen. So honestly, I love, I love all the choices, but I'd rather be in person. But next semester, when it's snowing, I'd rather not drive to campus all the time. So I like the split. It's even: Tuesdays, Thursdays, in-person, the rest of the week, online.
Okay, all right. If there's no other questions, I want to thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you.
And with seventeen credit hours, we're not going to force you to stay for the rest of the board, and we assume you've got other work to do.
Yeah, I actually do have stuff to submit tonight.
All right, all right. Go submit, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
President's items.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, and good evening, trustees. It is good to see you, and it's always great to see a student who's trumpeting our college better than I can do, which is just heartwarming. I have a few updates for you, and then a congratulations. First update is regarding strategic planning. I think I'll do the first two, and then pause for questions, and then the last two, pause for questions, and then the congratulations. The first update is regarding strategic planning. You all know we've been meeting as a strategic planning team on Mondays and Fridays for two hours for each session. And, you know, we had an ambitious pace, and the pace was to start, I believe, towards the end of September. It may have even been the beginning of October. Dr. Nealan, do you remember when we started?
Feels like ten years.
I think it was October, so we've-
The day we hired you.
We've moved very, very quickly, and I'm proud to report that we've taken in feedback from a survey that was presented to the entire campus community. We've taken in reports from the various members of our team, I think four reports, and we're now in the drafting stage. We've identified four members of our team to begin drafting what would be a strategic plan for us. We had our first review of the first draft, and that was just this morning. And we're making progress on getting to a place where I think we'll have a draft worthy of showing the campus community during a campus forum. That will be a virtual forum, and we've identified the thirtieth of November as the forum. Now, it will be virtual, and it'll be recorded, but we will also try to find a time that all the campus can take part in it, or as much as possible. And from there, it is our goal, and it's, like I say, it's an ambitious goal, and I'm still very optimistic that we'll make it. But it is, it is tough. If you look back at the pace that the last strategic plans have gone, our goal is to have this board a proposal for the strategic plan at its December board meeting, which is a little bit more than four weeks away now. And in that interim, we've got a holiday week. So I think we're on pace, and I'm excited to show you what we've been doing. And by then, you'll have the benefit of seeing what the team came up with, what the survey produced, what we learned from a forum with our campus. And then it would be my recommendation for the board to take up that proposal and come back, and if the board is ready, to review it for ratification in January. So I'm excited about that strategic plan. I want to call a couple of my teammates who are on that group, who are really doing fantastic work, and they're the four members of the drafting committee. And they are Kiember Pearson, who is the Associate Dean of the School of Business, Entrepreneurism, and Professional Development; Chardon Claiborne, who is the manager of the Learning Lab; Lori Gonco, who's the Vice President of Human Resources and Institutional Strategy and Special Projects for those that are really hard; and Dr. Michael Nealan, who's the Vice President of Academic Affairs and one of the, one of the best presenters around. And of course, he was the one that presented their first draft today. So that work is ongoing, and I'm, I'm on the committee also, and I'm leading it with Tony Perry, who is the Chair of the Senate, Faculty Senate, and we're anticipating getting you a draft that we think we will direct the college for at least two years by the time you all come back in December. The second thing I'll update you on, and then take a break for questions, is what the college is doing to think through and evaluate ways to comply with the United States government through OSHA's mandate that employers of our size have a vaccination mandate. I know you all have been thinking and talking about this in the other institution that you oversee. I see my friend, Dr. Malaco, in the back. I've been in conversations with him about this. I have discussed this issue with your chairman multiple times. And for those of my colleagues at the college, I'm anticipating us having guidance for how the college will respond to the OSHA mandate in the next coming weeks. And I'm also grateful for the support and collaboration we're getting from the, our partners in the leadership of the public school system. I also will be, for those of my colleagues in the workforce of Henry Ford College and in the collective bargaining units, I'm looking forward to meeting with the collective bargaining unit leaders at the end of this week to describe and discuss some ideas that we have for how and when to comply with the OSHA mandate. I do see my colleague's Vice President Rader with the AFT in attendance, President Zidnik with the Local Seventy-One Collective Bargaining Unit, President Boza with the AFO, and President Winless with the SSA. If you haven't seen it already, you do have an invitation for a meeting with us where we'll talk about that, I believe, on Thursday. And I know this is a topic for your membership. At the first Friday, just a little bit ago, I was asked questions about this. I know that this is something you all want some guidance on, and an opportunity to be heard. And my, my goal and my aim is to give you that opportunity at any time, really, if you need to reach out to myself or the Vice President of your unit, but also through your collective bargaining unit on Thursday. And then, Mr. Chairman, you know that I'll be working with Dr. Malaco to have some guidance for how we will comply. And I'll just be clear, you know, none of us asked for this, the pandemic or any of the things that come after it. And none of us asked for a difficult scenario where the federal government is dictating compliance, and some federal courts in the United States have said that the compliance is not valid. So it's a, it's a difficult scenario of questions we're working our way through, but you can rely on us to give you, as trustees, an opportunity to give us your best input, and also employees to give us your thoughts, and also an opportunity to hear where you, where we think we're going, and an opportunity to respond. So I'll pause now for any questions from trustees.
Trustee Pelichkov.
In regards to that mandate, do we have the full understanding of it as it stands today, the one that hasn't been adulterated yet due to the courts? And if so, is there a component to it for employees who are basically, if we have a number of them, who are mostly online and not in person, as opposed to those who are full-time on campus? Because we would have a variety of boxes to check and uncheck, depending on their employment status within the college campus.
The answer to your question is, assuming that what the federal OSHA has outlined, assuming that is valid, yes, we do have an understanding of what their expectations are. There have been litigants as recently as last week from a court in Texas that have said, "The federal government does not have the constitutional authority to issue this edict." And at least one court said, "That's an interesting enough question that we will pause the effect of that federal edict while we evaluate the constitutionality of it." So your question was, do we know if it's unalterated, or I'd use a different term, but if it's unaffected by a judicial ruling, do we know how to comply? The answer is yes. And that there are options. OSHA gave some options from various, from various things, but we do know how to comply, and we do have to make some decisions on those options, assuming we do comply. The real thing that's in question now is whether the United States' court system will invalidate or partially invalidate what the United States' executive branch has said any employers of our size have to comply with.
And we also know what the consequences are if it were to move forward and we weren't in compliance, correct?
Yeah, I have to tell you, Trustee Pelichkov, I don't know that with specificity. I do know that we have to comply, and if, if we don't comply, OSHA right now is the agency that is executing this part, and OSHA usually uses penalties of fines.
Right.
But don't hold me to that. I believe that that would be the first consequence.
Trustee, I'm sorry, Trustee Moser.
Yeah, if I can add to Trustee Petliczkoff's question, I was actually, Trustee Berry and Chair Thorpe, we were at the MASB convention, and they actually addressed this specific question. The court decision that you're talking about, President Cavalluna, is in the Fifth Circuit Court, and we are in the Sixth Circuit Court. So as of right now, I don't think it applies to Michigan just yet, because there is also another litigation in the pipeline coming in the same question. So we, we might be affected or not. But OSHA did provide a lot of options as far as how to get around it, or at least how to comply with it as an institution, such as that an employee would have, if they're not fully vaccinated, that they will have to be subject to continuous testing. And I don't know what that period is, but that could be looked into. But yeah, many other institutions, including my employer, has taken drastic measures as far as this even before the federal government, and let go of employees who refuse to vaccinate, so, which is very unfortunate. And it puts a lot of pressure now on public bodies and institutions now to comply with this law, especially that there is still a significant amount of people who are either not complying with the law, or not, the mandate, or not wanting to vaccinate because they don't trust the vaccine. So that's still more to go.
And I would add that while the OSHA rule is out there, and we're still waiting on my OSHA, my OSHA cannot water it down, so to speak. It can only become more strict. And we need to be ready to move, depending what happens with the courts. Any additional questions on either that item or strategic plan? Trustee Watts.
Do we have an understanding in terms of numbers and percentages of how many of our employees have become vaccinated to date?
Yeah, I actually got a report from Vice President Gonco about that just this morning, or this afternoon. And don't hold me to these specific numbers, but we have a little bit more than a thousand employees at Henry Ford College. And I believe we're in the two-hundred and thirty range of confirmed vaccinated, and that was when we, when we asked for voluntary submission. So I think that two-hundred and thirty is probably as low as the number would be. I suspect it's more. But that's a, that's an educated guess, and I don't remember when that, when that plebiscite took place, but it wasn't recently. It was back when the vaccine was relatively new.
Any additional questions?
Just a question on the strategic planning. I know you addressed this last time, President Cavalluna, but can any of us ask to join any of these sessions?
Yes, I asked the Chair to, to give me guidance about how the board wanted to, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the Chair said he would like the opportunity for any of you to attend anytime. And I, I think that's what I reported out. Is that accurate, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, and the meetings are normally Mondays and Fridays from ten to twelve, is it?
In person or?
In person.
Okay.
They've all been in person, and that is the plan for the remainder of the meetings?
Yeah.
Well, there was one that was virtual because you had a speaker in.
Yes, that's right. From, from out of town.
Yeah.
Virtual was not as a result of COVID. It was a result, a result of getting someone from Atlanta to attend.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but we want to try to not have more than three board members, so that we don't have a quorum in place if you were to so choose in the next few weeks.
So reach out to either- So reach out to either myself or President Cavallona if you do plan to attend one of the sessions. I attended one session. Has there been any other trustees attending any sessions? Okay. All right. And you've got a few more sessions than before. It's all wrapped up.
And we, we aren't participating, I don't think, as much as observing.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I meant. Yeah, drop in and.
Yeah, when I was at the one session, I was just listening to what the different groups were saying and, and just asking questions, giving a little bit of feedback.
Sure.
All right.
Mr. Chair, the next two items, first one is, it's hard to believe this, but it's enrollment season again. We're enrolling now and we're tracking it closely. What we're seeing across the state of Michigan is that community college enrollment is, it looks as though it is ready to rebound. Maybe not as much as we would like, but we may have hit bottom at the last semester. But I need your help. This is the best time to come to college. You can get skills and increase your livelihood and your quality of life. If you're over 25 or if you were a futures for frontliners, the price point is almost nothing. Because of the action this board has taken in distributing of federal funds, there is a discount on the tuition if you are not part of those free college programs. And we're going to be pushing from now until the next semester starts, which is the beginning of the new calendar year. So I encourage you all to help me by communicating the value like we saw from our student presenter today. The next item that I wanted to update you is on the return to campus process. We, we had a robust committee that was meeting to discuss the pandemic's effect on our campus and how to, and it sounds like hyperbole, but it's not. We closed the campus, opened it, closed it, opened it, kind of closed it again. It was whiplash and difficult. And I know you all went through that same thing with Dr. Malakow in the public school system. But we're, we're making progress. There seems to be less vacillations less often now. And as a result, the, the team that your colleague, Trustee McDonald, served on concluded that meeting in that kind of crisis, developed crisis management mode that that committee undertook was no longer as useful as just getting those type of questions about return to campus, moving through the particular areas of the college up to the particular vice president and then onto the cabinet. So with Trustee McDonald's agreement, that, that group has stopped meeting and now we're moving return to campus questions back to the traditional method that we take to solve problems at the college in operations.
If I can add something to that, there were, we had a meeting last week about this and there were several people that were part of the core group that still thought that it necessary for the group to continue to meet, not on a regular basis, but as things came up, because there were still a lot of questions that needed to be answered. So it hasn't, their role is less, but they are still a core group that will meet as needed.
Good. And, and I encourage the, the group to, to meet as often as necessary. What, what I think you and I were both hearing was a little bit of concern of, is it really necessary to keep meeting at the pace and, and the process? And I, you know, that group did great work. I mean, it was, it was phenomenal, the, the decisions that they helped us make and the way that they helped our students and our staff weather that unbelievable, difficult time. But we are trying to move more, back to more on campus. And in the winter semester, you're, you're going to see, and I know you've seen the data that we're slowly, not as quickly as I or some of us and even some of our students would hope, we're moving to a more face-to-face and more hybrid delivery of classes. And my anticipation is that that will be a trend that will continue. Any questions on those two items?
Trustee Moser.
Not much of a question, but kind of a case study. My nephew enrolled at U of M Dearborn. I named the institution. I wanted to just say at a nearby university, but, and he agreed for me to use his case. So he actually kind of did the same thing that our student speaker did, took so many classes on him and it was challenging for him as a freshman, as well as he didn't do his financials right and came up to be a little bit short with two questions. So he's deciding that he's going to come back to Henry Ford next semester. And he's going through the paperwork of, obviously U of M Dearborn is making it very difficult of being even a guest student here. So I would hope that we're, we're looking at this. I think there are so many other students, especially who are starting in a post-pandemic year, maybe off to a university, but found it to be either challenging or much more affordable than they thought. And they're, might be thinking in the same boat is, why don't I go back to a community college and complete a year or two, hopefully graduate here with an associate's and then go back to their home university. So that's something that I would advise and I hope that we're looking into in targeting those students, because we could get a, a good return of investment if we target those students who are in the same boat. Thank you.
Trustee McDonald.
It's less of a question and more of just a thought. When you're talking about tracking enrollment and enrollment in general, the last couple of months, when you look at the national statistics, there's been over 4 million people who have quit their jobs for various reasons. There's a lot of reasons. So I'm just wondering, and I, I don't know how we could do it, but if there's a way to identify some of those in this area and maybe encourage them or capture them to come to us, because generally speaking, when unemployment increases, then, you know, that's good for our enrollment process. So I wouldn't even know where to begin, but just something to maybe think of, some way to find out who they are and find a way of encouraging them to at least take a look at
So, Mr. Chairman, the last thing, I noted as kind of a recognition or congratulations, but you'll, I have a little, a bit of an anecdote and I, I hope you don't mind me sharing it, Trustee McDonald, but I, Veterans Day is a very important day for our entire country, but I know it's, it's particularly important for you. And so trustees, you might not be surprised when I thought, and Rhonda DeLong, who helps me think through the way we do the community celebration videos, we're bringing in guest video presenters now, and I couldn't think of anyone better to help me talk about what Veterans Day means to them than your colleague, Trustee McDonald. And you might not be surprised that at the first pass, it was a hard no. "I would not do that," she says. And so I tried again and, you know, to get one of your bosses to do something, they say no. It's a little bit of a tricky proposition. So I sicked Rhonda DeLong on her. And if you did see the Veterans Day video, you would have seen your colleague who gave a wonderful, a wonderful summation of not just how great and important Veterans Day is and how great and wonderful veterans are for our country, but this other important message, which is what these, these videos do for us. They show different perspectives of important parts of our society. And the other perspective was the people who support those veterans as their family and friends and what they go through. It's a little-known story, but it was one that it was illuminated by your courage to do that video. I thought you did a great job with it. I'm glad Rhonda talked you into doing it.
It wasn't that difficult.
Well, you could have fooled me. It sounded like, you did a great job. You honored your family and you also brought a needed voice to our community and its perspectives of, of holidays. And to all the other trustees, if I come to you, there's a standard been set now. But I congratulate you on Veterans Day and your family and to all the veterans who attend or work at HFC, I wish you all the pride and joy that you have of our country, knowing your service is what makes this country great. And that is my report.
Any other questions or comments before we move on? Next item, please.
Next item, discussion items, fall to proposed project, Board Report 4611, Vice President Sackowski.
This is a TIP proposal that's coming back. And the only reason it's coming back is because it is being moved forward through at least somewhat of a non-traditional path by using federal stimulus dollars for the proposal. That's the only change with that. And that's all I have on that, on behalf of Vice President Sackowski.
So do you have more information on this? How is this helping students connect?
Sure. You know, I actually, I anticipate someone might ask that question, so I'm going to ask my colleague, Nicole Ford Kondrejek, to come up and talk a little bit about that and also add anything else she wants to talk about on this TIP proposal.
Good evening. I did bring PowerPoint just to show you also what it looks like, just in case. This is an interactive kiosk and the idea is that it would be placed in the Welcome Center lobby. We can work through Zoom on the kiosk. It has a smart board. So the idea is that if we need someone to screen students before they come in for appointments, our staff could screen through the kiosk instead of being right next to them to make sure they are allowed to be on campus with the grade check on their health screening form. In addition, later on, the idea is that these could be placed throughout campus to connect students with the Welcome Center staff. So right now, we have what we call the virtual Welcome Center and students can drop in on Zoom for help daily with admissions, registration, financial aid. The Zoom connection through these kiosks would put us right where the students are in the classroom buildings. So if a student's in liberal arts, walking to class and they have a quick question about their financial aid refund date or when registration opens, instead of walking over to the Welcome Center, they could connect with us through one of these kiosks. That's a general overview. I, I am the C team tonight. Bob James couldn't be here. President, or Vice President Sackowski is not here, so I am the backup, but I'm here to answer questions if you have others.
Trustee Petlicov.
Okay. Since you're the C team, I don't, I'm not going to hold you to any answers. Have you seen, I mean, I'm assuming this is a physical machine. Does it have like a touchscreen? Does it have, you know, component mechanisms to it that people are going to be, I only ask because A, we have the potential for them, we know how it is, my God, you get into a, a bank ATM or even going through Myers, trying to get your card to read through the, and all these things that everybody's poking at has a propensity to have failure to it. A, one, one is who's going to be sanitizing them? B, how are we going to protect them from any kind of vandalism and/or accidental damage? Because I'm assuming that to repair them or replace them is going to have additional costs. So that's my question.
The one for the Welcome Center lobby, the idea is to have it wall-mounted so it wouldn't be something that students would be touching, so they're interacting more by speaking.
Okay.
And then in the other buildings, for example, if we had one in the campus safety building, there's someone there 24/7, so, with cameras. So this is new. It's new technology. It's a smart board, just like you would see in a classroom, but just in a kiosk format. So this is becoming more common. There was a presentation by Zoom a couple of months ago and they said, you know, this is our future. For example, like in hardware stores, they provided an example where they would have someone working in one aisle, but they could serve multiple store locations with one person, you know, working remotely. So it will, I think this is where we're going. This is the wave of the future. And we have touchscreen monitors in the Welcome Center now and we do clean them and have appropriate cleaning wipes for those.
So, but, but this, if it's wall-mounted, I'm assuming, is it motion sensor activated or they'll understand how, how to access it when they?
Yep, they'll see a person through Zoom.
So there's always somebody looking on, on the other side?
Yep.
Trustee Watts.
So how many kiosks are we looking to purchase? Is it just one or is this multiple?
This is for two to start.
This is for two. So does it do anything outside the Zoom?
It can. So with the smart board, you could have interactive maps, you could have other links. It's just a matter of how far we want to carry it out and just what Trustee Petlicov had mentioned, you know, if we want students interacting with it that much. So for the Welcome Center one, it's primarily to speak through.
Could they do anything in terms of their financial aid on there, pay their bills on there?
This wouldn't be designed for that.
So this would just?
Yep.
I, I think a privacy issue would be a big one if, if it's in a lobby.
Well, I'm wondering, is it, could you upload apps onto there?
You can.
So you could design your own apps to be uploaded onto that?
Not sure about designing your own.
You're talking to the backup of the backups.
Well, I'm just wondering, if they can zoom currently right now, then why get a kiosk? If they can use their phone to Zoom, so then what does the kiosk do that your phone wouldn't be able to do? Because I see students everywhere walking around with their phone. So that's why I'm wondering, what else then can this kiosk, what's the benefit of having that?
It's just that immediate connection. So we're logged in and it's there for them. They don't have to find a Zoom link and connect. And many students also walk in, they have trouble with their data or connecting to Wi-Fi, so it would just be connected for them.
And not everybody has a smartphone.
Trustee Moser, did you have a question or more?
I just was wondering, you know, if this is not going to remove the human touch that students might be looking for, that I hope this is just in addition for convenience and, and, you know, sometimes you do want to talk to through a screen. I know when I go to the gas station, if it tells me to go see the cashier, I'll be like, maybe I don't need gas today. For some people, especially people who are, you know, a little bit shy, they, they would like to talk through a screen. So I do see value in it, so I'm glad that's coming through.
I'm waiting for when we get it on a robotic one, where it can follow people around the campus. Then they'll always be ready to help.
I've, I've seen too many movies where I worry about what will happen, but I.
It's a bad, bad outcome.
The immediate one is, is that this is less personal. Even if it is a live person, it's less personal and isn't the Welcome Center, besides being called a Welcome Center, one of the first places that students usually attend?
And see a human being?
The other thing I just was curious about, I swear I've seen that last name recently, related, I'd assume?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
You didn't watch her as she was up here speaking. She looked like a proud.
Any additional questions?
No.
Thank you.
I think you could be promoted to the A team.
You were on discussion items.
Correct, yes.
So are we done with that?
We go to the next item, Financial Stability Ad-Hoc Committee Report, myself. Okay. So for the past, I would say, seven months, or not seven months, five months, I and about 16 other people have been meeting virtually, part of the ad hoc committee that was created in March of this year. And it has been very pleasant working with all of them. We met all virtually for all of the sessions and we have came to present recommendations that we're doing today. I don't know if any of the members here are part of the committee. I'm just trying to see, if you were part of the committee, if you can stand.
No.
Okay, so.
Leslie.
Leslie is here. And Mr. Rubin is here and obviously myself, Trustee Petlicov and Trustee Di Ambrosio are part of the committee. So to give you just a refresher and a background on how this committee came to be about, it was from obviously last year's discussions about the future of Henry Ford College, its financial stability and to see, get a pulse from community members and college stakeholders. and to see, get a pulse from community members and college stakeholders of how we can get three things, or three ways to sustain, increase, and strengthen the college financial position. I was appointed to be the Chair for this committee, and along, serving along from the administration is Vice President John Sotkowsky, who served as the co-chair. So, our first meeting started in April 7th, on April 7th, and our last meeting ended on October 12th. So, the committee's charge was to provide a recommendation, which we're doing today, to promote the long-term financial health of Henry Ford College. There's a quote by Bill Cox that says, "You can't build a long-term future on short-term thinking." Something to ponder upon. Committee members' makeup was made, again, by the three board members. From the administration, we had VP Sotkowsky, or from Henry Ford College, we also have two students, Mr. Noor Bazian, Mr. Jovan Martin, Mr. Berkeley from Local 71, Mr. Delfin Davis from the AFO organization, Mr. Mahiu from the Engineers Association, Mr. McDonald from Local 1650, Ms. Winless from the Support Staff Association. And then we also have community representation, Mr. Jamel Al, Mr. Paul Gathered, Mr. Tony Guerrero, Mr. Hussein Hashem, Mr. Ahmed Hamud, Ms. Mary Lane, our former trustee, and Ms. Ma'ali Luqman. The committee met again virtually due to the pandemic, and frankly, they were very convenient that we met virtually. We accommodated a lot of people's schedules, or have very busy schedules. We had many different presentations that were requested from the members of the committee. We had a presentation done by Ms. Sarah Gonzalez Herrera and Ms. Sullyan Larmonde from the International Office Team, and they were presenting on how well Henry Ford College is attracting international students and what we can do to increase that population. There were a lot of feedback given to the presenters, as well to Ms. Hallie Diamond, who is the interim Vice President of Student Affairs. We also had a presentation by VP Reginald Best on the foundation markup and what the foundation does, and how much funds does it bring to the college, to its students, and to the projects that we do here. I also did a presentation, extensive one, on the idea of expanding the college district, which we will also be talking about. We also had in a great presentation by VP Ronda De Long on the marketing, since there was a lot of interest and a lot of questions regarding the marketing approaches that Henry Ford College does. And we also had a lot of requests of financial documents that Mr. Sotkowsky gracefully brought to the committee. So, there were a lot of ideas that were brought forward from the committee members, and I could count up to 20 different ideas that were brought forward. Obviously, we're not going to go through them, but we actually managed to summarize them into four different recommendations. So, as you can see, all kinds of ideas, from talking about increasing enrollment to focusing on niche programs, to focusing on student retention, importance of local marketing, social media, and relationships with corporate partners. So, after many of these discussions, we kind of did a democratic way of voting up and down on these ideas and how important they are to each member of the committee. In the beginning, we did agree about the method of consensus that we would reach as a committee, and we agreed on the consensus method, which means that we would go around the room and try to reach consensus on any recommendation. And then we also kind of, I worked with others in summarizing some of the points or combining some of the ideas, so that we can give the Board of Trustees a recommendations that are concise and that are organized in their own category. So, going from 15 recommendations to four to be voted on by the entire committee. So, coming to the recommendations, and some of them are quite extensive, and they kind of cover a lot of different topics, but in one area. So, the first one was focusing on niche programs and marketing. The committee found that the college needs to do more on focusing on innovative programs, trade, industrial, technical programs. How do we also reevaluate and re, kind of reimagine the marketing approach for the college, looking into special programs like cybersecurity, alternate power, renewable energy, some of the things that are right now trending and are being talked about as the future. The second recommendation was around remote learning. Obviously, we were in the middle of a pandemic, and this came through just in the right time, is how do we even take remote learning and virtual learning to the next level that we have? We're forced to use it heavily in the past two years, but how do we take it now to the next level and potentially increase Henry Ford College's enrollment beyond our area? And then, Trustee Lane brought in the idea about how can Henry Ford College also contribute to platforms similar to Coursera? The third recommendation that was also brought forward, again, this recommendation is quite heavy. It has a lot of other things that were combined together, but could be summarized to partnerships and focusing on special population segments, mainly such as the Hispanic-American population, international students, improving relationships or focusing on personal relationships with the various groups, relationships with corporate partners such as Ford, to get to the next level or bringing more experience and funds to the college. The fourth recommendation is expanding the college district, and this is obviously subject to all legal requirements and things that we have to explore, increasing the tax base by bringing other school districts or cities to the college district. So, reaching consensus, based on those recommendations, the committee felt very strongly about the first recommendation. Actually, we had a unanimous five out of five vote from all of the members. The second and third recommendation reached high consensus, which means more than four out of five combining all of the votes. And then the last recommendation reached 3.45, considered as low consensus on how to expand the college district. Particularly on recommendation number four, Trustee Petlicov mentioned that we are a P-14 district, not a traditional college district, and she brought in the historical background, as this was tried before. She adds that the Community College Act was made before the, or after, sorry, after the Dearborn District is already a P-14 district. The committee decided to set this item for more detailed legal research that the Board of Trustees can take if they choose to move forward with it. So, I'm sorry I had to rush through just to cover in the 10 minutes. Obviously, there is a lot of information beyond those slides. I would be very happy to provide you any information that you would like to ask, and open the floor to any questions. And before questions, I'm sorry, I'd like to just thank all of the members who have participated and dedicated the time and effort to be in that committee. I know sometimes it was a lot of, you know, hours. It's an hour and a half for each meeting, and we were meeting monthly. One thing that I'd like to say, as far as feedback, I know we had two students. I wish they were more engaged. Something to definitely improve on for subcommittees is how to get the students more engaged, and I think if it was in-person, it would have been, the outcome would have been different as far as their interactions. So, virtually, obviously, you would have, you know, a couple of people who would dominate discussions. But that's sometimes a given for any committee, but I would hope that for next meetings, and as a feedback for all of us, including myself, is how do we get the students to also speak up? Although this was a topic that was kind of, I would say, beyond the students' interests at times. So, it's just something to think about. So, once again, I'd like to extend my thanks to all of the committee members who were with us. Thank you.
This committee had a very, very hard item that they had to tackle, because we're in the middle of also doing the strategic plan, which is focused on more of a short term, as was mentioned, more of a two-year timeframe. Sometimes we've done them in the past with a five-year timeframe, but this committee is sitting there trying to look at like a five to 10-year timeframe, and there are so many variables in that, it makes it really tough for them to come up with anything. So, I appreciate the time that you put together and the fact that you were able to bring back some recommendations, especially since we were trying to keep the timeframe short so that information could feed over to the strategic plan. Questions or comments? Trustee McDonald?
I'm just not sure. What is the plan of action now, since we've got these recommendations? And I know it's long-term, but what are next steps to move these recommendations forward?
So, obviously, the four recommendations were already shared with all of you. They were shared also with the Strategic Planning Committee, if I'm correct.
I'm not sure if they were shared with the Strategic Planning Team, but the Cabinet definitely saw these.
Okay, sure. So, I believe it would be, you know, a good idea to definitely share with the entire, that committee, with the Strategic Planning Committee, so they can look into this and possibly incorporate some of these recommendations into them. But for some recommendations, like especially the last one, I think that needs more of a legal research if we want to move forward with it, since it is quite a handful of things that we really have to look into as far as, is this even possible, the legal perspective about it? Are we a P-14 district? Can we be truly both a college district and a P-14 district at the same time? So, I think those are legal questions that perhaps we, I don't think this table can really look into it in one meeting, and it needs a legal opinion, perhaps.
Well, my question was more geared towards the first couple of recommendations.
Sure, yeah, but the next, the other items, I think they are, you know, head-on. I think the Strategic Planning Committee can take in those and implement those, since this was done in multiple meetings, and those were reviewed by community stakeholders who see these as a value, and I believe the college would see them as value as well. So, I hope that those would be incorporated into the Strategic Planning Committee, and, you know, any recommendation can even be brought back for discussion in this table as well.
Trustee Barry.
Yes, it sounds like there's a lot of great work being done by this committee. I appreciate that. You mentioned students. My question is, how about the community members, other than obviously former trustee Mary Lane? How engaged were they? A, B, did they have a good understanding of, you know, our financing and our struggles?
So, to answer your last question, I'm not sure. Obviously, we got many different people who are very involved and some who are not. We, I think the involvement and their engagement was very well. We did have some absences, obviously, and that goes for every committee in some meetings, but we did have a good dialogue on these topics, various topics, and their experiences came handy when we talked, for example, marketing. We had a marketing person, diversity and inclusion. We had one person who was in that field, as well as other ideas about alternative power and those discussions. So, yeah, I think, I would, I would think they also felt valued and that they have contributed to, as I sent these recommendations to them as well, or this presentation, and received a few emails mentioning their gratefulness of participating and advocating of, and being in this committee. So, once again, I thank them for their role.
So, it sounds like in, maybe in the future, if need be, they would become ambassadors for the college?
Absolutely. I think they learned a lot through this, these presentations that we've had, because in the beginning, we had a lot of, I don't want to call it misconceptions, but obviously perceptions, especially about our trade program. And perhaps it's not because we're not offering these programs, it's how we also market these programs. So, their perceptions have changed, I think, over the course of these meetings, and they've learned a lot through those presentations. And that taught us a lot, that we have a lot of great programs here, and we do have a limited budget, I know, on marketing, but we need to do even a better job of making sure that everybody is aware of what's happening at Henry Ford and what are the programs that we're offering.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I had a couple of questions for you regarding international students. And I know I've seen numbers in the past, but I can't recall it.
Yeah.
I would say that there's not a lot of international students. I don't know what the definition right now of an international student is. Is it somebody that is from outside the U.S. who comes here specifically to attend classes?
Correct, yeah. If I can say it correctly, President Kavala can correct me. An international student who comes to the U.S. on a student visa, and they would have to be accepted by the college prior to their travel. Sometimes, international students switch colleges or come from universities, colleges, and they switch again. So, that's still, they're still considered international students, but usually, it's a student who comes here for the purpose of studying and then returning back to their home country. And they get, their tuition obviously is much different than even out-of-district tuition, and majority of them, not all, receive some kind of scholarships from their home countries to come here, or assisted by family members.
Now, I know a previous district administration, I'm sorry, college administration was looking into this with the idea, I want to say, of China. Is this still the same idea? Has anything changed with being able to do things through Zoom and other features where they are our students, but they are remote?
It's illegal. They have to take classes here in this country.
So, yeah, there are a lot of legal challenges when it comes to that.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure what else has changed due to COVID, if that has worked or not.
What change actually is the U.S. government mandating that students have to take at least one, one class, three credit hours, in person. So, and that has changed. First, it was all-
Per semester, I assume.
Yeah, per semester, yeah. So, they cannot take all virtual classes as an international student.
So, they need to at least be on the ground locally for one class?
For at least one class.
Okay, yes.
Trustee Thorpe, the question about China and the previous administration, I was on the board when, and that wasn't too-
the board when, and that wasn't to bring Chinese students here. It was to share a educational program over for them to use that had our trademarks, so to speak, but that they used in their college over in China, because they had Ford Motor Products that they were teaching classes on and a variety of other things.
So it wasn't about international students?
So it wasn't to bring students over international, no.
But it wasn't to necessarily increase our international student exposure?
No. It was, it was to have a partnership of an educational program to share
Okay.
that we received monetary value for.
Thanks for the clarification. Trustee Barry.
Trustee Petrikov, are you referring to, I believe it was Mary Lane and Dr. Mead?
Went to, went to China, yeah.
Is that what the goal was?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was also, I believe, a nursing program in India that was kind of similar.
In India, they also did a similar thing, but with a different, yeah, educational.
And I remember a Chinese contingent coming over here for a reception
Yes.
several years ago. Okay.
So one thing that I'd like to mention about international students, obviously, students have to make, through our presentation and our, us learning from the presentation that Gonzalez and Ms. Larmen brought forward, that they have to make an investment before coming here. So they have to go through also hoops of not only getting accepted here, but also getting a visa through the State Department and going through the embassy and all of these things. One area I believe, and that I, you all recall, that I started embarking is contacting embassies and trying, this was pre-COVID, to see if, how can we get more students who are perhaps already here or still overseas, who can find Henry Ford to be home, especially for the first, first year of their journey in studying abroad for them in the U.S. We were successful in meeting with one ambassador when we were for the ACCT conference, and I hope that we can resume that now after COVID. I think there is still a lot of opportunities for Henry Ford to increase the student population for international students. I think the count right now is about 62, if I'm not mistaken, or 72, hovering around that number. But, yeah, it could be much, much more than that if we put more effort into bringing more students here.
Any additional questions or comments? Trustee Watts.
So I think the recommendation from number one, it was embedded in that, was that in terms of marketing, if we can go back to that, yes? And the trades. Focusing on new areas, what data were we using to determine the new areas for the next upcoming decade, outside of what we've obviously just seen in the news?
I don't think it was much data. It was more perception that one of the committee members had about offerings those classes or those majors and tracks that are trending, especially alternate power, renewable energy in the conversation right now about climate change and going, you know, with new visions of many different professions or jobs that probably are not even created yet, but they will be in the future. So thinking about these kind of in the horizon and bringing those forward, I think that was kind of the idea and where the committee members also felt like this is a good idea. I don't think it was based on clear data. It was more based on perception and what other institutions are doing.
I believe it would be a good idea to have Dr. Nealon at some point present what we have already developed and have on the books, that we can do and what we need to promote in those areas.
Right, well, I guess the second thing is if these are the ones that we're thinking are going to be the future, then are we taking into consideration the current shortages that we're seeing in the job market?
Yeah, I guess that's a question for the administration to think about. You're right. I mean, there are a lot of shortages now, especially in the area that I'm in in software. There are so many unfilled positions and where the college can take position of offering those programs, where they can prepare students to be professionals in those areas.
Well, I think when we were back, I think, I can't remember which month it was, where we decided to come up with this ad hoc committee, that back then, we didn't have shortages of teachers, care professionals.
Well, teachers, it's been a while.
Early childcare.
Yes, correct.
And I think that's what we're seeing, that, you know, thinking into the future, I don't think any of us would have realized what sort of shortage we had just a few months ago and how that's affecting our economy now. Just something to think about going forward with recommendation number one, that I think there's probably a lot more that we could add to that that we're seeing right now that's affecting many, many employers that left the workforce.
Except that we're making an assumption that the reason for why the shortage exists, there's already a lot of conversations going on. It's not just necessarily that there aren't bodies who could fill those positions. There's a reason why they are not taking on those positions. And a lot of it has to do with other impediments to their seeking out and/or being retained in those positions, be it childcare, financial disparities, job dissatisfaction. So it's a much broader social, societal issue than what we were looking at when we started this conversation a few months ago and didn't realize how far it was going to reach out into the communities.
Any additional items?
I just have one, obviously, for recommendation number four, that we still need a lot of legal background, and I do have the slides that I presented to the committee here as far as steps. But obviously, this needs a lot of work, so I don't know if we need to make a motion or we just need a direction to the administration to look into this further and get us more, I don't know if it's going to be a legal opinion or otherwise, of saying, are we a P-14 district? Are we a college district? Can we be both? And as, to get the gray area out as far as, also to get also data or historical background on the college. I know Trustee Petrikov mentioned that the college has tried to do this.
And I have to clarify, Trustee Moses, because you keep giving the impression, we are a P-14 district. Historically, there were junior colleges were created with the use of the school district that they were attached to, and Henry Ford College was attached to the P-12 district at that time. When they created in 1969, the Community College Act, we chose not to join. And they, so we are a P-14, we are legally a P-14 district. We are not part of the Community College District. They tried to get it to be separated in 1974. It was voted down by the community then. They wanted to remain, and it's never been put back on the ballot. And it would have to be a ballot initiative to separate the college from the P-12 district. That is the legal rendition.
I, I could, I get what you're saying. I would like to that, coming, obviously, now we're in 2021, things have changed a lot.
But our legal standing hasn't.
I completely understand. So I would like to get, if possible, to get a legal opinion on this. So it's more of a legal background, if this, something can be done. Because here's the thing, I think, you know, in every year, obviously, the expenses for the college increase. We're the highest college with the highest mill in the state, with the smallest tax base, maybe, I'm not sure if we are the smallest, but a very, compared to our similar-sized community colleges, we have a very tiny tax base. Similar colleges have about 27% of their revenue coming from property taxes, whereas for Henry Ford Colleges, about 12%. So that's, that's quite stark, especially that it's four mills, which is a lot for our residents. So there is a way of increasing, obviously, the size by going through this process, but we would like to get more information as far as, is this can be done? Or do we have to separate, as you're saying,
You have to separate.
to P-12, and then you have the college district. I view them as still two different institutions, although we do preside on both institutions. But they obviously are totally two different entities, especially that we sometimes sell buildings from one to another. They're bounded by different bylaws. So, and I'm not an attorney, and I'm not an attorney that is specialized in these areas. So I think we should get in kind of a legal opinion on this. And if there's a way, then we go, I would like to go forward with it. If what you're saying is, is definitely 100%, and we can't do anything about it, then at least I think we have, at least for myself, done the necessary work in order to, to help this college, especially now that we have a sentiment against millages, that the past two millages, one for the, our school district and one for the city, have failed. So, and I expect that the college is going to probably ask for a renewal, maybe next year or the year after. So those things have to be really considered, and I'm looking in the future. And if that's something that could be done, it could be a win-win situation for everyone. Obviously, we're going to be upsetting other institutions that currently preside over those areas if we annex other districts. But that's, that's a discussion to be have later.
We can, we can do due diligence and know what our options are, and we'll be able to review the options and see if it's something that we would want to move forward on if it had to go to a ballot.
It will have to go to a ballot.
So we can at least do our due diligence before knowing any of that. Trustee Barry.
President Kavaluna, this is a discussion that comes up every four or five years. It's come up in front of, yeah, three different presidents that I've been involved with. I would welcome, I mean, this is a discussion that Dr. Mead, John Sidkowski, and I had probably four or five years ago, and it didn't go anywhere. I would welcome legal opinion, and if, you know, Trustee Petrikov's saying, I'm not doubting what you're saying, but if that's what it is, then at least we know what we have to deal with if we're going to pursue that avenue. So I don't know where, where you would start for gathering the information.
I don't know if this is something that would require a motion from the board to ask the administration to move forward with, with gathering the legal opinion or the legal option, so we know what the process would be.
I don't think it requires a motion.
I don't think so.
Just the direction of the board that they are asking.
Is the board comfortable with going forward and getting more information on this?
I would be, so I don't know else.
Okay. Any real opposition to that? Even if we might run into a dead end, at least we know.
Are you going to put a dollar figure on it?
I don't know that we would need.
Then it would require, I don't know, well, you have to employ somebody to do the
Well, let's, let's, let's see. We're not, we don't need to be in a big rush for this. We can, we can just start the process and then see if there's going to be a cost and then come back.
Well, then what I would suggest is you should frame what you're looking for then. Are we, are we asking, are we requesting for what would be the procedure to separate the college from the P-12 if we are a P-14 district? What would that entail? What, are we legally, as a legal entity, as we currently stand?
I would think, and this could be the wrong way, but ultimately, what we're looking at is if we wanted to try to increase our footprint, our geographic footprint, our tax base, what do we need to do?
That's the way I'm seeing it.
Then you would have to find out what are the legal steps
Right.
in order to achieve that.
Right.
Correct.
This was the experience.
All right. You've got an understanding of, of it?
I do, and what I would, what I would ask, Mr. Chairman, is for me to think through what you've asked here and then communicate to you so that I have clarity on the deliverable, and then also be given, be given an opportunity to express my recommendation to you about the best ways for me to convey that information to you. There has been a lot of discussion of the history of this question. I have looked at the history of this question, and our status may be something of a sensitive nature that we, you give me an opportunity to give you a recommendation in the way we communicate it to you. You absolutely have the authority to seek a legal opinion. I think I understand what you want as far as what are the questions. I will make it clear with you by telling you what I think those questions are, and then I'd like the opportunity to express the best way for your administration to communicate the results of that.
That's a good.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Next discussion item, the hiring and board approval. We started this conversation last week at the P-12 level. This actually first came about based on conversations that I had with President Kavaluna, and it gets back to this underlying feeling of the college president has the right to appoint positions in what is considered a critical need, and it doesn't define what a critical need is. And we are in the same type of environment for hiring that the other side is with the P-12, where one of the more critical things you can do is not have to wait until the next board meeting to get approval to move forward with people and have people start. So did you have information that you could share so we could look over, like, where are we at today, and then talk about what options we would have?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The board currently has bylaws that, and policies that reserve the right for the board to hire, to make, to make an action item of the hiring of all college employees. Now, I don't want to get into the legal question that was just posed about whether the Michigan Community College Act applies to Henry Ford College. If it does, assume that it does, and I know that that's a point of some debate, but if it does, the Michigan Community College Act gives this board the right to delegate the authority to hire staff, however deemed fit. And I've, I've taken the opportunity to work with my teammates to get information about what a number of other community colleges do under the Michigan Community College Act about that question. And I'm happy to share those results with you if you, if you like. The reason that this is on your agenda today is, Mr., the Chair Thorpe and I have discussed whether it would, it would make more sense to have the opportunity for the board to give the administration more liberty for whatever the board felt comfortable giving more liberty to the, the executive's office to move more quickly for those instances when we are between board meetings, and particularly when there are some positions at the college that have higher attrition and more turnover, and when they are vacant, cause more hardship. And, you know, I think the board, if I, if I could give you my recommendation, the board has several different ways to handle this. The board can obviously take it up what they would say just afresh right now. The board The board could devote, delegate this question to the policy committee to evaluate some of the things I'm saying. But right now, the board limits the president's office to, to make hires between the days of a meeting to a pretty limited circumstance. And, and that's a historic preference of this board for which the board is completely within its prerogative to maintain. There's no doubt about that. I would say that Henry Ford College is in the anomaly in that, and I, I, I believe it's a vestige of the connection with the P-12, but I was, I was with you for much of your last board meeting, and I've watched the part that I didn't see in person, and I know that this is the discussion that's going on with Dr. Malaco and you all and your, your, your seats on his board also. But like any, any authority you delegate to the president or the superintendent, it's a, it's a thoughtful process. And the weighing of what authority the president has or the superintendent has versus the authority that you retain is something that I would not recommend you do lightly. But if you want to further analyze it, I, I think there are at least some points that you might consider in giving the administration some opportunity to, to move a little more quickly.
Trustee McDonald?
Isn't there an emergency provision already in the policy between meetings that hires can be moved forward and then voted on at the next meeting?
Kind of, trustee McDonald. Your policies allow the president to do that kind of hire between the meetings when employment is, and I'm quoting, "Employment is required to maintain continuity in the educational program." That, that is open for debate about what that could mean. If I were to recommend to a president, you, you would not want to take a very liberal view of what that means because I think you might transgress what a board member would think was that definition. But that is, that is the closest thing we have to an emergency relief valve to this question. And, you know, some, some institutions just, you know, they, they, they reserve their right to, to make decisions on recommendations with the president for a select few positions and then authorize the president to, to make those, those hiring decisions elsewhere, similarly to a lot of the things that the president has to decide to operate the college. But again, I'm not here to tell you that there's one size fits all. I am, I am here to tell you that I've looked at this, and, and there may be some arguments in favor of giving the administration a little more liberty between board meetings. Right now, it is limited to when I can make an argument that I believe you all will accept that not hiring would jeopardize maintaining the continuity of educational programs.
Trustee Barry?
I would recommend that we send this to the policy committee, take a look at it, let's start there. But I got a question also. If, I think in the past where, you know, president reached out to the chair and said, "I need to make, I need to move pretty quickly on this," would you have any objection? Get a feel, talk to your colleagues, and we were able to do that, if I remember right?
I think I recall situations similar.
And President Cavalluna did come forward to me with that, and I started reaching out to trustees. I didn't reach out to all trustees because I wasn't getting everyone in feeling one direction on this. So that's why I wanted to bring this back because we can, we can have an honest discussion about the, that description and what role that really means.
I, I do have a question. Would this, in, in your opinion, be something where it was a feeling of an already realized position? Or would it be something where you could create a new, a new cabinet member, a new, you know, director's position, something like that where you could create something and fill it without going before the board for approval?
Well, I'll be candid with you, trustee Pelishkov. I don't have a proposal here yet. I have identified a problem, and I've started looking at what similar sized institutions do with this question, but I'm not ready to tell you that I think I know the answer. If we did make any changes, I think the right way to do it is to find a place where the board feels comfortable that there needs to be a change and then builds whatever the change is, builds parameters that make it comfortable with a change. And I think that change should speak to the concerns that we're trying to remedy. It is true, I contacted the chair and said, "I've like, I've got a hire that I'd really like to move quickly because I think that it, it will dramatically help us." Well, we've selected the person we want. I, I have the authority to hire them if I can prove to you that it will, it is required to maintain the continuity of educational program. But being a lawyer myself, I was uncomfortable defining that and taking that decision and then having someone make an argument that I wasn't. So I decided not to push that. But if we decided to address that issue, I would, if it's the policy committee, if it's small groups, if it's in meetings with the chair, however the board decides to evaluate this question, I can come to you and I can say, "These are some of the things that I think we would gain." One example would be high turnover positions, facility staff. And I'm not saying that's positive or negative, it's just a fact that those positions have vacancies more often. And those employees who have to deal with, and unfortunately, if the vacancy happens like tomorrow, where we've got nothing between now, then our options are to go to the P-12 board meeting, which I understand there are valid reasons why that is not necessarily the best option. And if you stay with the idea that we have to meet with the P, with the college, then that team has to figure out how to, how to cope in the meantime, whether it's overtime, whether it's uncovered shifts. These are some of the things that might give the, and, and this isn't just for me, it would be for the president's office, whoever occupies it, to say, "We can move a little more quickly on those positions that the board feels more comfortable not having the chance to vote on." But this is, this is a group of people who were elected. I know you mentioned our student has a future in elected politics, which I think is true. You all have the authority to decide what you're comfortable with us having. I don't have a proposal yet.
Okay, and that, that's why I'm asking is because I'd like to understand, were there boundaries or, or issues that you saw that we had boundaries in place that you wanted to relieve? Or is this something where we can drive it ourselves as to what we were comfortable? I mean, I know we can. I mean, that's our, that's our role, but I'm just saying, I want to understand what your issues were more fully.
And I think you should have that understanding so that you can educate yourself about whether a change is necessary, and if it is necessary.
How far?
I think taking it to the policy committee is fine. As we discussed last week, it might not be that we make a lot of alterations to a policy, but we just come up with the procedures as a backup to the policy to, to help out and help with these situations.
I agree with you.
Any additional questions or comments on this? Thank you for taking the time to discuss this. Next item, please.
Next item, citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who have submitted a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees. Please limit comments to three minutes. We do have one blue card from Mr. Eric Rader, who would like to address the board about COVID protocols on campus.
As I take off my mask. Chair Thorpe, President Cavalluna, and members of the board. It's been a while since I've addressed the board. I used to do this a little more regularly, but, so I, earlier, President Cavalluna referred to the Return to Campus Committee, which I, I serve, have served on as a 1650 representative. I know Senate Chair Perry is on there as a, I think the senate chair or in that capacity. In particular, I want to thank trustee McDonald for, for serving on that. And I was glad that you, that we did, I was part of the group in our meeting last week that really pushed it to keep the group in existence, even if we're not meeting on a weekly. And I even, as, as Dr. Gonco knows, I did, I don't want to meet weekly. We're in this room quite a bit right now anyways, so. But it, it is, from the 1650 perspective, which is what I'm representing here and on the committee, there still are a lot of concerns among our members. In fact, we had a membership meeting, we're still, we're meeting by Zoom, but we had a membership meeting today, and there were, I kind of ticked off a number of, of concerns that, some of them new, some are recurring issues. So I think the idea of this Return to Campus group being, being a clearinghouse, I guess, for a lot of those concerns, some of them can be dealt with operationally, as President Cavalluna was saying earlier. Some of them are things that I think really need to, to come to the attention of this group, of this Return to Campus group from time to time because I think there are some, some significant concerns. We're going to be communicating, 1650 soon, we'll be communicating kind of in a more formal way with a letter. Some of the, we're going to be talking to the Return to Campus group as well as possibly to the board, some of just the, the, the concerns as we transition back to really being on campus. This is my, this semester is the first time I've been on campus on a full-time basis since May of, well, since March of 2020. As President Cavalluna mentioned earlier, I think we're increasing the percentage of classes on campus. Is it, I think 60 or is it 40 on campus, 60 online, I think in the, in the winter semester. This semester, of course, it's, the percentages are different. But when we first began, when we began meeting in around April, May of 2020, I think I'd been on the Return to Campus Committee since its inception. We certainly were dealing with just the crisis of COVID, and we were a long way away from even, I mean, we're just trying to kind of triage in a lot of ways what was going on. I, I'm proud of the work that we've done on this committee. In particular, I've gotten a chance to know Katrina Minnis and, and who's an SSA rep. I've gotten to know her. I had, hadn't really not known her very well or maybe at all, actually, prior to this. And of course, we have AFO represented, we have all the different groups, the 71 and exempts. And I think that dialogue that we've had on this committee, on this, I guess the committee, has been very helpful in moving and making recommendations to the college administration and to the board. But I particularly want to thank trustee McDonald because you were not only advocating on, from the board perspective, but also your role in the P-12. I think you've brought some perspective that, that we, I don't go to the P-12 meetings, but I know that you've had some interesting ones over the last few months. And I think that perspective has helped us as we've made decisions, although we have a different, a lot of different dynamics, but some similarities, and I think that's been helpful, in particular on the mask policy because we had relaxed the mask, mask policy over the summer when the CDC had relaxed it, and then Delta reared its head, so we, several of us were pushing to have the masks required again. And trustee McDonald really was helpful on that, that issue among others. So I just wanted to, to kind of indicate that we are going to be communicating about some of the concerns that we have, and some of these I've already shared with, with Dr. Gonco and Vice President Clark, who have been wonderful co-chairs of this group. It's been a very collegial process, but again, last week, we did kind of share that we really hope that this group would remain intact, even if we're not meeting on, on the same frequency that we were before. So I just, again, thanked, thanked the board for, for your support for, for us, for all faculty, full-time and part-time, and in the SSA really are, they're on the front lines dealing with students and the Welcome Center and some other places, and they've brought some really important issues to the fore that I think that, that kind of share some commonalities with, with the faculty as well. So I just wanted to, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add something, since you were just talking about the committee's work. It has been amazing, and you think back to when we first, the committee first developed, we were, had nothing, and they came up with a plan and they came up with everything, signage. It covered every aspect and everything you could imagine. So I just want to thank them for their work. When you said that, I was in my mind going back to all of the work that's been done, and it's just mountains of work that have been done by the core committee, but primarily all of the individual committees that have generated the, the information and everything that's needed to get the work done. So thanks, everyone that's involved. It's just been a huge amount of work, and they've done a great job.
And in March of 2020, we all thought we were going to be back the next month.
Yeah.
Who knew?
Thank you.
Good Lord, thank you.
Action items? Were there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wished to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the, from the action below. Move to approve action items one through nine as recommended in this agenda.
So moved?
Support.
Just want to make sure there was no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we should have asked.
It's okay. No one talked quick enough, and that's fine.
I have questions on one and four and five.
Next question to number one.
One, four, five. Any additional? All right. I'm sorry, did we have a motion?
The motion's been moved and supported.
Thank you.
I didn't know who made the motion. You did?
I made the motion.
And I supported it.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Go ahead with the questions on number one.
Yeah, actually, number one is not a question, but more of a comment. I do understand, and I read the report about awarding the contractor with slightly more money because of the specifications for these PCs, which is completely fine. I completely understand that as a software developer. In the same token for number four and five, for number five, seems like this is a contract sole provider, where I was reading in the report, it doesn't strike me like something that is so unique. Many software companies offer cybersecurity software platforms, even native ones such as Microsoft. So my question is, why wasn't this submitted to getting a bid instead of having sole providers? And that question goes for four and five.
Mr. Secretary, I, excuse me, I do not know. Mr. Steiner, do you know the answers to those? And if you do, would you mind come to the podium? If you don't know the answers to those, you just stay seated and.
You give me your choice. I was a purchasing guy, not the, not the, I need to.
So, Mr. Steiner, if you don't feel comfortable answering that question, then please say so, and I'll, I'll go a different direction.
The information that I have. The information that I have on both of those board reports is that there was a lot of vetting of the options in the market from the requesting departments. The TellView for marketing and communications, which they will use as a, to replace the displays. We have 40 displays around campus that have been dark for the past two or three years because of the broadcasting system that we use. And TellView has had a good reputation in similar institutions and was checked and vetted by our marketing communications department, and they came forward with that recommendation as, you know, the, the best available in the market. On the cybersecurity, our Director of Information Technology and Network Systems, Joe Zitnick, does an incredible amount of research on any product that he recommends, and I know that there are particular advantages in going with this system. that there are particular advantages in going with this system compared to Microsoft and other vendors, our former, former vendor that we're using now. And if you can brace yourself, I'm sure Joe would love to tell you all the advantages of the.
Well, but, Mr. Steiner, the trustee's question is, is there some method by which we avoided, not avoided, but did not conduct a bid? I see that the Telview was a quote from 2019. Was there a bid done then?
There was, there were several proposals submitted to marketing communications, and that I was copied on, was not a formal bid process, but we investigated other potential sources.
Okay, is it, this is just me not recalling the, the rules by which you operate. Is there a basis for which we can avoid having to do a bid on this? Usually we see a sole source basis. Do you know if there was, or if that rule that requires a sole source justification doesn't apply to this?
I think that there's the issue of judging the proprietary technology. You know, software development is a field that, one software system versus another software system have so many different variations and nuances that to do a bid, you could wind up with a product that is even equal price or lower price, but doesn't give you the total functionality that, you know, these, you know, intellectual property-based systems do.
All right, and is it, would the answer be the same there for that cybersecurity one, essentially that?
Yes, very much so.
All right. Is there any, is there, this are also questions that you probably are, it's not fair to ask you, but I just wonder if you know. Is there any grave danger that would befall the college if these were brought back to the board for, for action, these two, in December?
Well, this pricing is going to change.
That's what I was looking at.
In 2022 for Telview, I, we may, if we wait too long, lose our 2019.
Yes, they've, with Telview, they've held their prices since 2019, they'll hold their prices through the end of November, and we can, the Telview's, Telview's issue goes in conjunction with a bid that we are issuing for displays, for new displays.
So there was a bid for?
No, for the displays.
Well, for the, for the displays, yes. For not, for the Telview system, two pieces joined together. Telview is the broadcasting software.
Okay.
And then we have a hardware bid. They have to be used together in order to get a complete system. Telview will hold our pricing, going back two years ago, through the end of November. We're issuing a bid now for the display systems that will come to the board in December to award. And Telview will hold our, if we issue them the order before November, they'll hold that pricing through the first quarter of 2022, while we wait for the displays to get on campus and we can actually use the software.
All right, and you're saying that you're going to run a bid for those actual hardware pieces?
Yes.
And the reason why you would not do a similar bidding process for this software is IP, intellectual property?
Correct.
All right, and that's, that's in keeping with the process, the policies of this board?
Yes, and that's why we're asking for the board for permission for the sole source.
Okay, all right. And is that same analysis applied to the cybersecurity software platform?
Very much so. And as we've done with other network software programs, IT has done a lot of research about the vendors, about the systems. The cybersecurity system was top-rated by independent firms.
Okay, so you've got professional opinions from your agencies in the college asking for these products that are so precise, they invalidate the need to do a bid, because a bid would be a fiction, because of the precision of the need?
Correct.
All right, and you don't have the ability to answer that question, because you didn't preside, provide that precision?
Yes.
All right. Trustee, Mr. Secretary, I was educating myself there.
Sure, yeah, yeah, no, no, that, that helped me a lot. I just want to say, you know, whenever possible, it would be, it would serve the college well if we have competition, and even if we already know the specifications, just put it up there for, you know, bids, and if that happens, if that sole provider would just ask for it. Again, I do understand the software complications here, you know, cybersecurity, software systems, there are so many. And if you have all of the checkboxes necessary that this vendor may checkbox also, you know, and this is obviously time-sensitive, so I don't have any objections to this, President Cavalluna, but I think just for the future to, to also be cognizant of the time when we bring in those awards, we can have them even earlier, so we can have those discussions.
Trustee Barry?
The way I understand it, Telview project, we approved it already. The project was delayed because of COVID-19 and market conditions because of COVID-19. I think we're lucky to.
It was a TIF project.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was approved by this board.
Right.
I think the, we're lucky that Telview's, you know.
Honoring.
Honoring their price from two years ago, where we know what everything else, what direction things went, so I definitely don't want to.
I don't want to, yeah.
Don't want to lose this.
Any other questions on action items four or five?
We're still discussing four and five, aren't we?
Well, that's what I was seeing, if there was, if we had any other questions for those ones, before going back to trustee Watts, who had a question on number one.
I no longer have a question on number one.
All right, we're done with trustee Watts on number one. Trustee Barry, was there anything else that you were going to mention on four or five?
No, thank you, Chair.
Anything else before we bring the action items for a vote? All right, all those in favor of the recommended action signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Next item.
Next item is Board of Trustees' Policy Updates, President Cavalluna.
Oh, the.
I'm sorry, that's number eight, which we already approved. Board of Trustees' Business Acknowledgement Correspondence. My apologies.
Don't apologize.
Did anyone have any correspondence for the college? I can't recall receiving any. Next item.
Board Committee Reports.
Trustee Barry.
The Board Policy Subcommittee met earlier, and we discussed some employment policies, nine of them, if I'm correct. The recommendation from administration came that we rescind those policies, move them over to the College Employee Handbook. The word rescind, I'm sure is going to jump out at everybody, so the recommendation from the board and administration agreed that we're going to slow things down. Vice President Clark's going to email the entire board what policies we're talking about, and once you see them, you'll, you'll understand better. So we will meet again and come back with a recommendation. That's the way I understand it, okay. Any others, trustee Watts, trustee Moses, you want to add? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Were there any other committee meetings since we last met? All right.
Obviously, the ad hoc committee map and the report.
Yep. Next?
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
All right. Yes, trustee Moses?
I don't know if this is still coming to us as far as the diversity, equity, and inclusion presentation by Crystal, is it?
Tracy Davis.
Tracy, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Can you rephrase that?
Is that, is there a presentation coming forward to us, to the entire board for it, or the recording of the presentation that myself and trustee McDonald have attended suffices, that presentation?
You're talking about the, the HR diversity hiring philosophy?
Yes.
Yes. I did not plan to bring this back to the board, but I, I am more than happy to do it. I, I believe, Ms. Dimitri, did we record that?
It was shared.
But if, if the board thinks that a public presentation of that would be useful, I'm more than happy to accommodate that. I know Ms. Davis is, is both passionate about this and fully able to do that. The, I, at the state of the college three months, two months ago, we discussed, I discussed that that policy was going to be rolled out this semester, and it still is going to be. Much of it's already being implemented in practice. My hope is that there will be actual, a document that people can look at on our HR website that outlines the, the things you saw in that presentation. That hasn't happened yet, so that's a status update, and I, again, reiterate, if, if the board would like to have a presentation on that, it would be nearly the same, or we could make it a little shorter than what you all saw. Was that, was that a Zoom meeting?
Yes.
Yes. We could, we could do that publicly if you guys would like.
I would like that.
Would you want to wait until we have the rest of it implemented before we do this, though?
I think that would probably make sense, the last step of implementation is the document being made available, and that is in its final stages. In fact, Ms. Davis and Dr. Gonko and I are working on a written statement from me at the beginning of it, and that is the last step. We've, we've discussed it with collective bargaining, we've discussed it with board members, we've discussed it with external legal counsel. There's a couple affinity groups at our college we've discussed it with, so, for all intents and purposes, it's, it's going to take place, and if the presentation you all saw was useful, I'm more than happy to have.
It was excellent.
I would like it to be a public presentation.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Any other? Trustee Watts?
Could we get a, a report for the percentage of our students here at Henry Ford College who have a disability, whether it's an intellectual or developmental?
I will endeavor to get it, and if I can't, I'll explain why we can't.
Any other items there? All right.
Next item is Board Member Commentary.
Trustee Moses?
Yeah. Obviously, we mentioned that trustee Barry, President Thorpe, and myself were at the MASV, which was the Michigan Association of School Boards Conference, it was the annual leadership conference in Grand Rapids, and obviously, many of the presentations that we attended and sessions were geared to the P-12 districts, but I think we learned a good deal that do apply to the college, and we will debrief some of that in a P-12 meeting to the rest of the board, but I found them to be very valuable sessions, and I think time and money well spent. Thanksgiving is around the corner, so I would like to wish everyone at Henry Ford College a happy Thanksgiving, and hopefully that you will find some time to sit down with your families and share meals together, and be thankful for everything that we've had, especially after these difficult two years. And those were my comments. Thank you.
Trustee McDonald?
We discussed Veterans Day quite a bit, but I just wanted to mention that I had gone to the Veterans Ceremony, which is put on by the Dearborn Allied War Veterans Group, and Kevin Dewey did a great job with the band, they did the music for the ceremony, and as always, they did a fabulous job, so I just wanted to give them some kudos.
Any additional commentary? All right, next item.
Future meeting dates, Monday, December 6th, 2021, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 PM, at the Administrative Services Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, December 13th, 2021, HFC Board of Trustees' Meeting, 7:00 PM, at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
On behalf of the board, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, hope you get a chance to spend it with those you love. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the next twenty days.